Okay, Commissioner Commander.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Oh, you're asking me. I do have two things.
I'm sorry, but that you didn't have them on the agenda, you can't bring them up. I'm kidding.
Did you ask her, or she's already done hers, right?
Yeah, I already did mine, yeah.
I do too. First of all, it's imperative that we send down the chain a thank you to our Public Works people and the finance people and everybody else that has been working 24 hours a day, seven days a week on Spotted Dolphin. I went down there and, I mean, that was the deepest hole, you know. They have gone above and beyond as they always do when the people in this county need them. And I think we all want to say a thank you to them to what they're doing because they have certainly gone above and beyond.
Yes, they've done a fantastic job.
And second of all, I want to remind everybody that we're having the Fourth of July on the first of September. I call it the force on the first. We did have to postpone the Fourth of July because of the rains and we are going to, as the Baptist would say, second verse, same as the first, we're going to do exactly what we were going to do on the Fourth of July. On the first of September, the parade starts at 4:30, entertainment at 6:00, and of course, fireworks always after dark. So we invite everybody in Walton County to come up and be around Lake Defuniac. If you've not been around that lake when those fireworks go off, it is an awesome sight. So we invite you to do that.
Is that it?
That's it.
Mr. Enfield?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Previously, at both board meetings and during the hearings that we had with regard to fire assessment, we talked about doing some modifications to the way we do business, especially east and west of Freeport, and the fact that it is an area of county, both east and west, that Freeport has managed in the past on fire response and fire service. When we passed the change to the fire assessment and we increased it by $50 per residence, it enabled the county at that time to develop a funding mechanism to staff county fire east and west of Freeport. When we met last time, we talked about the fact, and we had a joint meeting with Freeport, there were several options that were out there. One was to put a new station east of Freeport, near Windswept, and one was to put one west of Freeport, at a place not yet determined, but to look at what we could do there, and then the county would just do that and let Freeport go on their own. A second option was, let's work with the city of Freeport to see about working the fire situation into a county operation to save them some of their own ad valorem taxes and to work a transition that we can do to take over firefighting for them. We would have a new station to the east, somewhere near Windswept, and that by taking over Freeport, we can work the western aspect as has been done in the past. A third option was to put a new station east near Windswept and to move the existing station that's down in Choctaw Beach a little bit further east. I understand that there are going to be some major repairs or renovations that have to be done to that station, or maybe even a total reconstruction. So one of the options would be to move that to the east. There were a number of considerations. The first option would end up costing the county some $40,000. The second option with Freeport would only cost $24,000, would provide us an opportunity to work with them and to provide some job opportunities for their existing fire staff. And the third opportunity, because we would simply be relocating existing staff and operations, would minimize the cost to the county. And I know we've received a proposal from the city to pay them $75,000 and keep this going for another year. My inclination is I would like to see us be able to work something out with the city of Freeport to do that. I know they have concerns about how soon could this be done, and while initially I would have liked to have seen October 1st be, let's get this done, I realize there's going to be some time to firm a transition. Now, the county's ready to go east. We're ready to put up a temporary facility to house firefighters and to move the equipment to the east, and with the fire assessment monies that we've gotten to do the necessary staffing and the necessary operational costs there. So I think that's on October 1st that goes for that. In looking back at working with Freeport, I would consider the fact that if we need 90 days, let's say till January 1st, to transition all of the things that need to be transitioned to Freeport and to pay them a ratable share of the money that we've got looking at the costs for operations and personnel in our matrix, I would think that would be something to do as too. There was a proposal that we buy their equipment, and I would remind the board that over time, with the exception, I think, of one big tanker, most of their big pieces of equipment were front-funded as a loan from the county, which was either had the payments forgiven or we gave them money to the budget to pay us back. So I'm not real keen about buying the equipment. However, buying the fire station is something that I think the board could consider, and there is opportunities to, at some point in time, tie that buying of the station to the existing loan that's outstanding on water and sewer for Freeport. So there's a lot of things, but to get this going, to put in motion the fact that we need to establish fire services, county-run fire services in the county areas, to get the discussion going, I'd like to make a motion that we propose working with the city of Freeport, that by January 1st, we coordinate operations so that it's going to be county-maintained, county-run, that for the 90 days, we make a ratable share of the cost that we had calculated for operations and personnel for Freeport to cover that, and that we work then to have, whatever we've got to do at Choctaw Beach, deferred until a point in time that we know exactly where we could go with another station west there to augment things. But I think it's also crucial that, I point out, I think it's important that if there are firefighters in the city of Freeport that would be displaced, that we give first opportunity, first option, to those vacancies in the county, as long as those people are willing to go for certifications, which the county would pay for. So I would like to say my second option is modified to allow for a January 1st thing would be my motion to get discussion going here.
I'll second the motion. Because the option to, with, say the last part of your motion, option two...
Well, originally, the matrix that you've got would show an operation that would take over on October 1st, and I am sensitive to the fact that there's going to be some transition time needed, and what I would like to modify that to be would be to allow for 90 days to make a smooth transition with the city of Freeport and to pay for that one-fourth of the personnel and operation costs that we had in our matrix for the city of Freeport for that time.
Okay.
Of course, that would require the city of Freeport to accept that option, but what it gives staff is the ability then to, for September 9th, for our budget hearing, the ability to put into the budget the necessary funding in order to accomplish that and see if we can work with the city of Freeport to come to a resolution. And I know there are people from the city of Freeport that perhaps could help to talk about that.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Clayton Askinson, City Attorney for the City of Freeport, Mayor Russ Barley, and Janet McLean, Councilman. I know you have in front of you a proposal that we furnish to each member, and if I'm understanding, Mr. Enfield's motion is that, I guess, really would give us opportunity during the next 90 days to attempt to work out some resolution that would also involve the payment concerning the sewer loan that we have with the county. We would like to tie that in, in any aspect if we could.
Well, and for our budgetary purposes right now, I just want to get the budget available to accommodate that we would work with the city of Freeport to accomplish this, and that would help do that. I am certainly amenable to listening to proposals to help repay that sewer loan in a fashion that maybe is to use some of it to offset the building or whatever other things that have got to be involved, but I want to work with the city of Freeport to accomplish something that will benefit both. And to me, the biggest benefit that was going to be for the city of Freeport was the ability to reduce your budgetary outlay and perhaps reduce your own millage rate.
And we appreciate that, and we don't disagree with that it would have helped on our budget. But if I understand, you're going to fund, you would fund the Freeport for the next 90 days or till January 1st for the new budget year, and if we work out an agreement, then of course, each judge could amend your budget to properly reflect what we work out in an agreement.
Yeah, we've got the cost in option two that shows what we anticipate would be the operational and personnel cost, and I would think that one-fourth of the year, we should be funding that to Freeport in order to make that work.
And I don't think we have any, you know, of course, we appreciate that, and I think we'd have to go back to the council, but I believe that the council would probably be amenable to that, giving us an opportunity, because we are right here at the last minute for both of us, opportunity to try to work out an agreement that would involve, you know, our proposed payment to you of the $1 million on the sewer loan. And of course, obviously, we don't owe that $1 million today, but we would like to satisfy that obligation, and we're able to do that, but we need to try to work out, you know, of course, if we take on additional obligation to pay you something, then that's going to affect our budget as far as, you know, continuing to run a fire department. So we appreciate the opportunity, I think, for the 90-day period, we would recommend that, perhaps meeting with the county administrator, either Ms. McLean or Mayor Barley, and Mr. Davidson perhaps, so we could talk about how to handle the sewer loan and the transition for the fire department. There are different things, obviously, we would like to see, we would like to see the fire department stay in Freeport, and we think that if you take over the fire department, it would alleviate you having to build at least one of those stations that you're thinking about building, because it's already there, and it serves a, you know, currently it serves to the north end of the bay and all the way to Windswept and the Bruiser locations. So we think it's a win-win situation for both parties, and we think we can come to a resolution, especially by January, we think we'll probably come to that even before then, but...
So y'all still want to tie the two together?
Well, we think it would be a benefit to both of us to tie the two together. It gives you the payment and...
And I think that's something that you're absolutely right. You can work with the new county administrator, try and see what we can work out on that aspect of it. I think the thing that is critical to this board right now is that if you indeed are willing to go down that path, we will need you to pass the ordinance that will allow the assessment of the fire MSBU onto the Freeport properties.
And when do you have, need to have that order adopted by?
I'm not a lawyer, sir, but I was understanding that they're doing the same thing with Paxton, and we're requiring them to have it done by October 1st. Is that doable?
Well, is that when it has to be done, Mr. Davis, by October 1? The MSBU ordinance, does it have to be done by October 1 for Freeport if we're still negotiating a buyout or settlement of this?
Yes, it has to be completed by October 1.
Well, you know, to answer your question, yes, we could do it by October 1. I would assume that if we do that, we'd have an entire agreement between the parties as it relates to everything, because us entering into an agreement with you is going to be contingent on us adopting that MSBU, because obviously, we don't want the MSBU in place if we continue to maintain the fire department and then you collecting the money.
And I agree, but I mean, it's an incentive for us to work jointly with the city to get it done, to resolve a whole bunch of these other side issues that we've got going on. But the bottom line is, is if all of a sudden the city came back and said, no, we could always go to option three, which would... But my key thing for right now is that this board would adopt a position so that when we go September 9th to adopt the budget, that our finance people know what to incorporate into the budget for firefighting.
To answer your question from a legal standpoint, yes, we could have the ordinance adopted by, to be effective, by October 1, we'd have to have first reading on the 5th of September, which we can accomplish, and then we would adopt it at our, probably our last meeting in September. So to answer that question, yes, we could have that ordinance in place if we have an agreement with the county as it relates to the fire department and the sewer. For your information, the proposal is in front of you. The council met in special session last night, and my recommendation is a unanimous vote on the council to do that. So I think that that shows our willingness to sit down and work with the county in trying to bring this matter to a resolution that is beneficial to both bodies and to the public, you know, and to the taxpayers for you and the taxpayers within the city of Freeport. So...
And I appreciate the new leadership that we have in Freeport and their willingness to come and work with us and discuss this with us, and Janet and Mr. Mayor, thank you both for things too.
Need to do those negotiations pretty quickly so we could try to have some, it may require both of us having special meetings to get the respective boards to approve it, but we're willing to try to work toward that goal. Worst-case scenario, you fund us for the 90-day period, and in the 90 days, we're back to square one, but we hope that doesn't happen.
And we would need, obviously, to advertise the 20-day period, then to send out a separate mail-out, and most likely, this would be on a separate bill, not necessarily on their ad valorem tax bill because of the lateness, just so the public is aware.
Oh, it would be a separate bill.
Mr. Chairman, I think what I'm hearing is that there is a, in principle, at least an agreement to move forward with that so that we can adopt for our budgetary purposes the numbers that we've got here, and that we would task the new county administrator to diligently work with them, to come to an agreement on the other issues that are attendant to this.
Is that under option two?
It's a modified option two with the 90 days to affect the transition for which we will fund the 90 days.
I think we already have a motion and a second, right?
There is, but I just, we're recapping just so that we're clear, and I think that we've got, in principle, an understanding of what we're trying to accomplish.
And if we have to have another special meeting with y'all, I think the last one was so productive, then we certainly, you know, we can schedule it in.
Well, but I think giving staff opportunity to sit down with the numbers to, for both of us, that they could present to the respective boards would be the first thing we need to do.
Right.
And so that we know exactly what we're talking about in the way of numbers and time payments and things of the nature. I mean, because as the city of Freeport wants to make sure that the firemen they have, you know, that we think they'll all be certified, and we want to make sure that they are given, as you suggested, given an opportunity to transition in to, you know, the county. Again, condition of them being certified, and we believe they all will be, but those things I think we would need to try to work out in overall agreement.
And in the backchecking I've done with staff is that there would be positions available to accommodate them all, again, their willingness to become certified at county expense.
Okay.
Bill, I think your motion was for the county administrator.
Mr. Hudson, go ahead, Bill.
What about, we need to have council also be involved with that?
I wanted you to say county staff. I meant it to say county staff. Oh, you've got it?
HR.
HR.
Through Mr. Beard, Brady.
Well, and Mr. Davis, yeah.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Bob Hudson. I'm the executive director of the Walton County Taxpayers Association. Bill, if you could, I'm trying to crunch the numbers a little bit in my head because I didn't clearly understand. My understanding is the outstanding balance on that loan is about 2.3, I'm rounding to some...
Yes, sir.
About 2.3 million. And your proposal and what the board's fixed to consider would be an issue that would be budget-related on September the 9th, and I'm trying to determine what the impact on the budget is going to be if you do this. For example, you said something about there was some offer for a $1 million payment.
At the joint meeting we had with the city, Bob, there was a discussion of doing a couple of things. Number one, its current outstanding balance is about 2.3 million dollars, and it's been carrying a 3.09 interest rate to it. Number one, change the interest rate, change the document to be, from this point forward, zero interest. Pay a $1 million down now. There is a $400,000 forgiveness at the end, which leaves $900,000 to be repaid out of that. One of the proposals was to pay it over a five-year, seven-year, whatever period of time, but also from the standpoint that if we are to buy the fire station and the property there, that however that can be worked out, part of that loan repayment after the $1 million in cash is paid, could be applied against the amount that's outstanding there. But that has to be worked out.
But that was just proposed today, so we're just, the combination of the two was just brought up today, so we haven't really talked about it before now.
I'd like to clarify one, I think maybe misconception. While the outstanding balance on the loan out of September 30th would be $2,307,000, perhaps more or less, we do not owe that today. We owe you approximately $12,000 to $14,000 today. That agreement says we pay you, and we have people connecting. So for the people to think that we owe, right now, we owe you a check for $2 million is incorrect. We do not. We owe you maybe $12,000 to $14,000. I'm not sure if Mr. Hudson understands that.
No, I clearly understand that, and I also clearly understand what the loan agreement was and how it was to be paid back. For example, Bill, you talk about a $400,000 forgiveness, but my understanding and reading of the document says that was based on a certain amount of hookups, because the original intent was to try and relieve some of the pressure on the bay by having sewer hookups. The last numbers that I saw indicate that they're nowhere close to having that number of hookups, and why would we forgive the whole thing or deduct that at that point in time? And then the last one I want to make is, those are general fund loans, and so those are directly affecting taxpayers and what we pay for. And I understand if we can work some kind of agreement out that would say, well, we're going to take a $1 million payment now, and then we're going to finance the balance over a number... This is a 10-year-old loan to begin with, and you say, well, we only owe $12,000. Well, the loan exceeds the principal balance at this point in time by almost $200,000, and that's interest, and I understand the payments and the way the payments have been applied, they've been applied to interest first. They've paid about $334,000. I just want to know that what we're doing is in the best interest of not only the city of Freeport and the city and the Board of County Commissioners in terms of addressing its concern and issue over fire and EMS service in those areas, but that we're also addressing that issue of what the whole intent of the loan was about. It was to bring water, I mean, to bring sewer into those areas, and so I'm questioning, is there intent to actually do that? For example, if you do that, are we going to get any hookups for what we've done?
I can't, I mean, the sewer's already there.
Well, I would certainly hope that that would be a part of the discussion, that there would be something that would tie to actually hooking people up. I mean, I've seen the water quality test, and y'all have talked about the water quality test, and yeah, they're there.
One of the things that we hope that this might accomplish for the city, and that's up to the city, is that if we can find a way to resolve some of this debt burden on them, they'll be able to lower their hookup costs to their customers and move forward. But that's a city issue that I'm not ready to address. All I'm saying is that right now, I've got a proposal on the table, that whether or not we can work out a deal with them, but it's certainly one that we're going to ask the county administrator to look at with him, to see if part of the resolution of this fire issue can also resolve the loan. Yeah, I'd like to see, we haven't seen a million dollars come in on this ever, and we haven't gotten payments for quite a while. So this is an opportunity to get some of the loan repaid and find a way that instead of us paying cash, we could do a part of loan forgiveness on whatever gets worked out.
Have you, Bill, I'm sure you've probably reviewed their last audit, the financial statements from last year, and looked at the balance in that account?
And your point is?
There seems to be fund balance available to pay the loan and own the system outright.
And I understand that you've got that, however, and Mr. Askinson is correct, that the requirement to make the payments are only when they collect those deposits. So we've got a liability issue on the books and a fund balance on the books, but he's exactly correct, that they, they're not required to fund any money to the county unless they collect it. So we're trying to resolve this impasse and resolve their liability issue as quickly as possible, and at the same time, get the county to go forward with firefighting and do whatever we can to resolve the indebtedness that's been on the books for eight years?
Ten years.
Mr., may I add to what you're saying? You know, I see such a willingness right now with the city of Freeport. They are willing to do what it takes. In the past, I, when Freeport was in my district, you know, I tried to get them to either lower the payments to hook up or to let them pay over time, was never able to get that accomplished. I see now a willingness with Freeport to help people hook up, pay overtime, do whatever. I see a willingness with this group to make that happen, and I think we need to work with them and help them accomplish that, you know.
And Commissioner Commander, I agree with you 100%, and it's been a joy for me to watch the new commission down there, just as there's been some new faces here. All I'm saying is I hope we will not lose sight of what the main goal was between the loan and why we wanted sewer extended into those areas in the quest to resolve a liability and an asset requirement that both entities have. One has an asset, one has a liability, and that we could work to do that, and I just didn't understand the total thing, Bill. I appreciate your...
Your points are well taken, Mr. Hudson. Thank you.
And hopefully, this will be the last loan from the county to any entity?
I like the word hopefully.
Because they have never worked out very well from the county's standpoint.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate your comments.
I can't imagine that we would...
Because you weren't at the joint meeting. Ms. Meadows pointed out that through the Gulf Consortium which I'm on, we are working diligently to try to get some restore money to do all of the bay. That's part, I mean, I know it's a long time coming, but the county is looking at that issue and trying to find some money to do that.
Was that workshop taped? Did we tape that workshop?
Yes, didn't we? Yes.
We did. If we taped that workshop...
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't tape it. I would like to just say something. I would like to not get the two issues intermingled today and confused, because this is about the fire, and granted, there is maybe an opportunity to work with the sewer thing, but for purposes of clarity and just keeping this simple, I'd rather deal with, you know, the fire issue...
And that's my motion.
Yeah, and then go to the sewer issue. If it works out, it works out, but this specifically is the fire issue, and I think that's...
Right, and it gives our staff the direction on what to do from the budget standpoint, but also it also gives then, because I'm modifying it to be 90 days, the chance to work all these things out through the new county administrator and through your new council.
I'd like to address one issue that he made about the hookups. We would love for everybody down there to hook up. The sewer line is in place, and we would love for all of those people. We can't require them to hook up. I don't know if they know that, but we cannot. We have an agreement with the county, when we were given the franchise for the area, that said we could not enforce the statute that says they must hook up if it's available. Now, we want to change that, and we start requiring people, but I don't think anybody wants to do that at this point. But we have not turned down anyone that wanted to hook up to the system. We need the people on our...
It's just a matter, yeah, it's a matter of the economy. The economy came in, and so now we're kind of in a...
And we have a plan in place to finance their hookup. We're ready to do that. We have the capability of doing it just as quick as we have time. We've been there one month, but give us some time, and we are working on this.
Ms. McLean, y'all are going to save a significant chunk of change if this all goes down. Could you not take those funds, which will be coming back into your general fund, and use it to lower the connection fees to those existing? Is that your plan?
Our plan is to lower the fee, work with them on that, work with finance in it, to get everybody hooked up. This rainy season's been a good time for us to put the letters out.
It's our benefit to have every customer out there on that sewer system. It's, it's to our benefit to have every customer out there on that sewer system connected to our sewer system, and, and so, yes, we want to explore opportunities or plans that would give them the opportunity financially to hook up to the system, and this new council is exploring that possibility.
I can't imagine that they're not failing all around the bay, because, I mean, I, I live on high ground, and I'm having trouble, so there's got to be, you know, they've got to be failing, and isn't it, doesn't the health department say that once they fail that, that they do have to hook up, you know, if it's available?
Got a motion. Any other questions?
I think there was a motion. Do you need it repeated?
No, we've got it. Okay. We have a motion. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
We'll look forward to hearing from you whenever we could get together to, as, as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to jump to number three on, on my actions here, and as part of, again, going forward with the new county fire assessment program of the MSBU, we need to notify both Liberty and Argyle Fire Stations that this coming budget cycle is the last time that we'll be giving the stipend to them for this, and that they need to go out and do their referendums to, if they need a referendum, to decide with their own district what they're going to need for funding to accomplish what their, their goals and objectives are. If they come up to, to the level that the county is currently at, they'll actually be achieving an increase greater than what the county's been giving them. So, we look to them to do that. So, I need, whether it's a motion or whether it's a direction to staff, to notify them in writing so that they're not caught unawares that after this budget cycle, there will not be any other stipends coming.
They're going to notify. They'll notify. We don't have to have a motion.
Have a motion.
And the third one, which goes back to the other, is we, we've established now a timeline for roughly January first of 2014 for the city of Freeport to stop. On the city of Dufuniax Springs, one of the reasons that we've been paying them over the years is that they've had to backstop both Liberty and Argyle going into fires, because they've got the certified people. Since we have this one last year for Liberty and Argyle, I would like to notify Dufuniax Springs that after this next budget cycle, our payment to them for backstopping Liberty and Argyle will also stop, so that we'll make a payment in 2014 to the city of Dufuniax Springs, but that, as with the cessation of payments to Liberty and Argyle at the end of, of budget year 2014, that that payment for backstopping will stop, and we would suggest that they, they contract directly with Liberty and Argyle for whatever direct backstopping they need. I don't know if that needs a motion.
That's right.
If it does, I make the motion.
Yes, I think that would need a motion. Yes, because we're changing operations.
Second.
Have a motion. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chapman?
No, maybe.
Are there any public comments? Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Larry Helms. I'm the president of the Walton County Firefighters Union. I just have one question. I'd like some clarification, if you would. Freeport Fire has approximately seven full-time firemen, not including their chief. You had said that you'd be willing to give them an opportunity to come onboard with Walton County. If we were to merge, are you willing to open up seven more FTEs to allow those firemen to come onboard with the county? Because currently, we're, you know, we don't have those FTEs. So, I, I guess the clarification I'm looking for is that are we willing to open up those spaces for those firemen, and women, as the case may be, to allow them to, to work for the county?
Well, the, the way the structure is for doing this, it would need six directly in, in the Freeport area and one that may be involved in another aspect of county-wide thing. So, there, there would be seven vacancies that, again, if they're willing to go for certification at county expense...
I understand.
They will get first crack at becoming a Walton County firefighter.
And I understand that they would have to go through the certification process and all that. I just, it was, there were some questions, not only from our union, but a couple of their firemen also, and I told them I would ask for a little clarification, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're going to need them, you know, we can't...
Any other public comments? Okay, we'll go into the land use portion.
I want you to get five minutes for everybody to clear out. Can we take a five-minute break, Mr. Chairman, so everybody can clear the room? And I can get my other book out?
Oh, boy.